Thanks all for joining us tonight. It is about 7:04 on my watch here and we are going to call the special meeting of the Planning Commission for July 18th to order. Just gonna go through and can I have everyone introduce themselves as our roll call tonight? We've got some new people up here. Our alternates are all serving tonight, so if we could just start with Olivia.
Olivia Fairchild.
Tim Leducer.
Kirk Scott.
Michelle Williams.
Tom Fiddy.
Brian Blombeck.
Thank you all very much. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the circle. Thank you all very much. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I don't know.
Commissions? No? Okay, great. We're gonna move into public delegations and if you wanna read on the screen behind me, I'm just gonna summarize. Public delegations is a time when members of the public can speak to the Planning Commission. However, we can't speak about agenda items, referrals, applications, subject to a decision by this commission, or a public hearing, or items in litigation. Anybody here that wanted to speak during public delegations?
Jeff Torrance, 197 Upper Patagansett Road. I have a document here. Last month during delegations, Mrs. Calow got up and made a bunch of allegations about the Nottingham Hills subdivision and the Darrows Ridge subdivision that I developed. They were specific to secondary accesses that were allegedly required for emergency purposes. And none of that is true. Both of those subdivisions had maximum cul-de-sac lengths that met the requirements of the subdivision regulations. And if you go through these documents, these are all documents that are recorded in the public records, land records, which include the milars from the subdivision that show exactly what makes up the properties. It doesn't show any through roads going through the property. She, Mrs. Calow, may have been confused because there was an access easement that we retained when we sold what is now the Darrow Pond portion of the property back in 2004. And we sold it in phases. And so we reserved the right to continue the road through what is now the Darrow Pond property in the event that the buyer, Vespera Investments, didn't close on the second piece of the land dissemblage. And, but, that did, that was not an obligation, that was just a right that we retained. Similarly, in the Darrows Ridge subdivision, there was originally proposed a secondary access road, and then this commission actually eliminated that requirement when the Public Works Director, the Town Engineer, and the Farm Marshal all came in and said it was unnecessary. And so this commission voted to eliminate it, and the milars of that particular subdivision is included in the documents I provided you with. As far as the maintenance requirements of that, the Nottingham Hills subdivision ends when the pavement ends. There's a dirt path that she was, that Mrs. Calow gave you pictures of, and a gate. From the time the pavement ends, that's the town's property. The gate's probably 150 to 200 feet into the town's property. Town put up that gate. So, you know, that property is now subject to a conservation easement in those locations, at both endpoints of the Nottingham Hills subdivision. So, roads can't be built in any event. In addition, I included from the land records, meeting minutes of a Darrow Pond open space committee meeting in which Mr. Farmica indicated to the committee that there would be no additional roads built on the Darrow Pond property. So, I just, since it was, you made that part of the record, I wanted to make sure that it was corrected.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will add this to the record too as well. If we could just get that into our meeting materials, just as we did with Ms. Calow.
Add it to the minutes, yeah?
Yep.
Is what you're asking? Yeah, so I can give you this copy?
Thanks.
If you'd like, we can have it scanned in for you. I could scan it in for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. Anyone else here to chat tonight? Okay. Let's move into reports, communications. Anything?
I have nothing to report this morning.
Okay.
In terms of communications.
I am not sure who our zoning representative was for the last meeting.
I went to the one before the last meeting. I'd like to report a little bit on that.
Okay.
There was one July 6th, and I think it was Nicole.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry.
If you wanna just pull the mic close to you? There we go.
I can report on the meeting before last. The last zoning meeting was on July 6th or 7th, I think. Just, they had a discussion on what this gentleman just referred to about the easements on the Darrow Pond. They discussed that. That lady Nancy, who addressed us last planning meeting, she gave the same discussion to the zoning. And then they went into their regular meeting, and they discussed at length this marker seven Marina issue that they've had in town. And the company was present, filed for an application for a coastal site plan review. And they went over this long history of issues they've had. There was three pending lawsuits that got resolved through these actions, basically over this oyster business that the Marina is, has been undergoing. You know, they harvest oysters and they're basically considered farming them. So, they went through that at length. It took quite a while, there were several pages of notes there, but in the end, the lawsuits were dropped and the municipal coastal site plan review was approved and everybody was happy. So, that happened. And then they had some discussion on alternates who wanted to try to be elected. There was a couple of people, they had one opening, and they had, I think, four different votes until they agreed on one alternate. So, that's about the extent of the meeting.
Okay. So, I think, as you know, we have three members who are absent today. I'm guessing that one of them was our zoning representative for the most recent meeting after yours, but...
Their next meeting is July 20th.
July 20th?
This Thursday.
Oh, so we did miss?
You're good.
Yeah, the holiday.
Oh, I...
So, that was it?
Sorry, I looked at that calendar that I just given, I thought it said July 6th or something.
Okay, great. That's perfect.
Okay, I could be mistaken. Maybe, I was just looking here.
Great.
The 20th is a special meeting, yeah, the July 6th meeting, they met, yeah.
Okay, so we probably don't have our representative scheduled for the 20th. Typically on special meetings, we do not. Is anyone available to attend? Would anyone like to be our zoning rep on the meeting of the 20th? That is Thursday, this Thursday. If not, we can catch it on YouTube. And that's what it looks like we'll do. Okay, I'm out of town that night, but, great. Thank you, Brian. Thanks all. And ex officio, Mr. Weber.
Can I use the microphone?
Great.
Sorry, I can say nothing to report. No. The only thing I think that should refer for here is that there was a discussion on short-term rentals, and that they're gonna form a committee to look at short-term rentals, and that committee's gonna be a cross-section of zoning, voter selectmen, fire, beach communities and such. So, if you would like a member on that subcommittee, clearly Kevin will entertain that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Gary has a couple updates for us tonight, Samuel Smith and subdivision status.
So, we went out with the RFP for the architectural study. We've got several back. We decided to go with the Christopher Williams Architects LLC. They seem to be quite experienced and clearly understood the scope of work, so we'll be getting that underway finally. And then subdivision updates. What I have to report there is, I did hand out a draft. I haven't got a chance to go back and make any further revisions to it. I think we left it at the last meeting in your, in the commission's hands to review and make any comments. I don't know, now that we have three regular members out, I don't know where they may be on their review as well.
Okay.
And I know Kirk had been absent last month, and I know he had some comments, I think, at some point, so when we get to discussion.
Yeah.
Depending on where we are with time, you can either move on or not. It's up to you.
Yeah, I think we'll probably wanna discuss that in old business when we get to that part of the agenda. I know we'd like to get a public hearing scheduled, we've been talking about that, so, and then summer schedules, we've been a little slower than normal, so talk about that later in the agenda. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Subcommittees do not have a update on our Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Subcommittee. We haven't met in some time, but we probably should, so we'll get together on that. And no updates from me as chair, vice chair? Any updates? No? Okay. All right. Great. That gets us through our reports tonight, and moving into the acceptance of minutes. We've got meeting minutes from June, from our June 6th meeting.
Motion to approve June 6 minutes.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Olivia. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you, Kirk. No public hearings tonight, so let's move right into our subdivisions and re-subdivisions. Gary, can you put tonight's agenda on the screen?
Did you say they, was that on my June 13th minutes?
June. It used to be June.
I said June 6th.
I said June 6th, too.
June 6th, it's been 13th.
But you're right.
June.
It was the 13th.
Is it 13th? Do I need to re-motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve June 13th minutes.
Thank you, Tim. Olivia, do you second that amendment?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the right date minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you, Sue. Okay. Back to tonight, July 18th. We are into subdivisions and re-subdivisions, and I'm just gonna, for the record, read what's behind me. We are looking at the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., and Shelley Harney, applicants for Portside Holdings LLC, owner. Application for a five-lot subdivision at property located on the corner of Upper Walnut Hill Road and Holmes Road, East Lime Assessors Map Number 55.0, Lot Number 3.1, Zoned RU80. So, this application was submitted on May 1st. Our date of receipt was May 9th, and so we have 65 days to render a decision, which was 7/13, but we did receive an extension from the applicant, which brings us to tonight. So, I believe the applicant is here and wants to speak with us.
Good evening, members of the commission. Paul Garrity for Kristen Clark, the applicant here. Less than disappointing you, I have handouts.
Great.
Well, first to, so maybe you can get a jump on where I have this in my sort of agenda tonight. Is updated, amended design report dated July 12th, 2023.
Thank you very much.
In addition, I have a copy of a letter to Mr. Geischel regarding the wetlands on this and just the updated biology, excuse me, archaeology report, and I didn't make copies for everybody, but it's paragraph, so I asked.
All right, great. I'll take a look and send it around the table, so.
So, the, in terms of the letter from July 17th, 2023, to Mr. Geischel, as I indicated, it includes, it's referencing the archaeology report that we submitted. Apparently, there was an issue in terms of the report from Sarah Sportman, Yukon, and this, and I think the exhibits got mixed up on there, so we submitted the archaeology report with the, to ensure that it was completed and in the record. The other issue that I wanted to address is the wetlands issue. As you may be aware, we conveyed out the wetlands to the East Lime Land Trust on that, and under 8-26E, what that did then was to essentially render the wetlands commission's need to issue a report moot at that point in time, because there's no wetlands on the property. As part of the discussion with the Wetlands Commission on that night, and Mr. Geischel, it was requested that some notes be placed on the plan regarding any development on the properties that's within the 300-foot buffer would require a wetland permit, and we would put that on the deed, et cetera. I think Mr. Geischel has captured those comments in his motion to approve, and we have no issue with that. The, I also have a letter from, can I find it in here? The Land Trust, which I'd like to read into the letter dated July 17th, 2023. Madam Chair, I don't know if you've received a copy of it yet. It was addressed to you from the Land Trust, but it reads as follows. Hand-delivered, Michelle Royce Williams, Chair, Town of East Lime Planning Commission, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyana, Connecticut, Ray and the Hannon Highlands subdivision, Holmes Road and Upper Walnut. Dear members of the East Lime Planning Commission, please accept this correspondence as confirmation. We have accepted the following properties as open space contributions from Portside Holdings and English Harbor Capital Partners, tenants and common as part of the above referenced subdivision. Paragraph 1, 8.5 acres by warranty deed dated July 7th, 2023, and recorded in the Town of East Lime Land Records at volume 1,098, page 386. Paragraph number 2, 2.55 acres in the form of a conservation easement, also dated July 7th, 2023, which will be recorded upon approval from the approval of the grantor's pending subdivision application. Please be advised that these properties are, but are existing 301-acre open space property known as the Hannon Nature Preserve, and as such, they intend to use these properties as a buffer to the existing publicly accessible property. Accordingly, there will be no public access to the wetland properties. There is a conservation easement that, as you probably were at this point, being placed in the rear of these properties, which allows the Land Trust to access the wetlands both from Holmes Road or Grassy Hill, but also directly from the interior of their property, because one of the wetlands pieces is not, does not butt directly onto the Land Trust property. If I can make this...
I think that one got into the materials.
Okay, all right.
Let's just confirm. Okay, great. If we could add that to the materials, I do believe that it was scanned and emailed to me, that, the letter. Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, this letter is online.
It's not online.
So, I'll be sure it was.
And I have, for the record, a copy of the warranty deed and the proposed conservation easement. Conservation easement actually is signed, but I believe for the copy, I redacted via stamp, the signature line, just because I didn't want it. Maybe not, but anyway, it's a copy. So, there's a copy of the warranty deed and the draft conserva, or the conservation easement, which would be released from my office's escrow upon approval of the subdivision application.
Is that the same as Exhibit 9 in this packet? Okay.
Right. And then what I'd like to do is take a moment just to run through the amended design report. I think we had gone through it at the initial meeting on this.
What I'd love to do as you run through it is to pull it up on the screen, and if you can direct us to it, if it is in this packet, just so that we're all looking at the same thing.
Sure. So, starting with the biological report, Exhibit 2, on the attachments, is the report regarding biology on the site from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It indicates that the natural resources that are on the site, it discusses, and this is just sort of a generic conversation of the letter, but that the greatest threat to the forest species that were determined to be on the site is habitat fragmentation. Obviously, this commission is well aware that as part of this development process, the applicant and owners of the property put together the 300-plus acres that went into the open space requirement and now covered by a conservation easement in favor of the Department of Environmental Protection on that. So, the client has done a tremendous amount, along with the prior owner of that property, to put together unfragmented portion of the property and limit any potential impact that development would have. The inland wetlands reports are Exhibits 3 and 4 from Mr. Thoreau. And Mr. Thoreau has indicated that the development poses no threat to the wetlands on the property, that were, were on the property, I should say, and that he doesn't see any impact to any wetlands in the vicinity either as a result of the development, and that's in his most recent letter from, in, which is Exhibit 3, dated June 28th, 2022. The open space property being subdivided is approximately 10.3 acres of the original 277. The configuration was established by lot-line modifications on this. As you may recall, there were three separate parcels when we put this proposal together. We retain pieces from those three parcels on there. This is one of the parcels that, where there was a retention of some of the property. Total of approximately 304 acres has now been placed into open space. I do note in Mr. Geischel's approval that he pointed out that under conventional subdivision design, this would be, this would meet the open space requirements. It falls slightly short on the CDC design. We'd ask this commission to take into account the fact that the developers of this property were able to put together the 305 acres in open space, but if the commission were to so desire, we would agree to pay a fee in lieu of any additional open space, which is permissible under the state statute. I did some rough math earlier when I saw Mr. Geischel's memo, and it would be about $10,000 that we would have to pay in order to make up the, compensate for the roughly two acres of open space, two and a half acres of open space, I believe that he said, would be needed. But I spoke with the client about that, and the client would rather than try and redesign some of the properties or increase the conservation easement, which might force the building squares or whatever to be moved, that we'd be happy to pay, well, not happy, but we'd be willing to pay the fee into the town upon the sale of the individual lots.
It seems like we're at our, the design portion of this packet. I just wanna make sure again that we're all looking at the same thing. So, we've just gone through these lot-line revisions. Can you, this is...
I'm at Exhibit 5.
Now, Attorney Garrity, this is, we are not yet, this does not reflect the application changes as yet, these maps, right? This was getting us here.
That's correct.
Okay.
The map that should be in the record from Mr. Bernardo dated July 7th, 2023, reflected the changes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll get to that. I just, thank you for keeping us straight here.
Michelle, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, I just had a question on the, on our committee. How do we enforce, like, the biological report as restrictions on, say, for example, land clearing?
All right, so we'll come back to that after Attorney Garrity's finished with the presentation of the application, but I'm gonna make a note on that, and we can definitely discuss it.
Thank you. So, on the yield plan, we could've obtained more lots out of this, but we stuck with five, because we believe from a development standpoint, that made the most sense. Sewage disposal, we have approvals from Ledge Light. The Ledge Light approval asks that certain conditions be, or certain issues be added to the survey plans by Mr. Bernardo. Those have been done, so everything that Ledge Light asked to be placed on the plans has been done in the revised plan.
And that's what we'll see shortly.
That's correct.
Great, great.
The water supply, these are all served by wells, and they're compliant with the Public Health Code. Stormwater management plan has been prepared by May Engineering. Stormwater management plan has been prepared by May Engineering. All matters identified by the town engineer were addressed in the revised report of June 16th, 2023. If there's any, that's in exhibit L. If there are any issues or questions with it, Mr. May is here tonight to answer those. Road constructions are improvements. There are no road construction or public improvements required based on the subdivision. The ma- the site context map complies with the requirements of the East Line subdivision regulations of Section 522- or Prenz A and Prenz, and that is in exhibit one. The natural and cultural resources map, which is exhibit 12, has been provided for this. And exhibit 12, as I recall, doesn't indicate that there were any significant resources that would be impacted by the development of the properties. We made a request to the State Archaeology Department, which is in exhibit 14. That's Ms. Sportman's memo. And to the extent that there were any recommendations in that, we would intend to follow them. But they didn't, according to her letter dated July 5th, 2023, she did not identify any significant archaeological sites or deposits. And that was, the office, OSA, incurred with Ms. Dr. Holmes' recommendations that no additional archaeological work, archaeological work is merited within the project area. Construction activities, no construction activities are required. The applicant, as you're probably aware at this point, is not a home builder itself, so anybody coming in with a home on it is going to have to go back to the town to get any plans for construction approved. Construction sequence report, we intend to sell the particular lots, and because no public improvements are required, there is no sequencing report that would be necessary. No easements are required for the subdivision of the property. The pesticide report indicated no evidence of farming or pesticide uses on the property. Energy efficiency and conservation statements per Section 6.62-26 of the regulations. We have provided south-facing roof surfaces on the homes on Holmes Road, on the homes on Holmes Road, to allow placement of unobstructed solar. As it relates to Lot 5, an area in the south-facing slope to the rear of the proposed home to allow placement of ground mounted, ground-mounted solar there. We've also left areas that, for no clearing on the northern sides of the property to allow, to create wind barriers, particularly for the winter time. And location of the budding open space and vegetation won't interfere with the potential solar energy systems if homeowners choose to so install them on the property. I think I covered the fact that the, notice, the location of the inland wetlands is going to be included in the deeds on the property. It was one of the concerns wetlands has. How do they know, in addition to the buffer area being on the map, there's going to be a notation on there that there are inland wetlands near the property, and any activity within that 300-foot requires permit approval. I think I've covered the issue of the commission's ability to consider the fact that this was originally 270-plus acres that made its way into open space, and that the commission could waive any additional open space requirements. But as I've indicated, if that's not the direction that the commission goes in, we would ask the commission to allow us to make up the difference by virtue of payment on the sale of the individual lots based on the regulations.
All right. Are we ready to take a look?
Sure.
Well, you can turn around and point out the TV if you'd like.
Ah, there we go. And I've got my handy-dandy. So Lot 4, Lot 4, as you may recall, was entitled to a free split. That free split was taken a few weeks ago, leaving only four more lots as part of the subdivision. We have Lot 5, is, oh, yeah. Lot 5, right here. This is the wetland area that's being, has been deeded to the land trust. These are the no-cut areas on here, I believe. You can see them. And then we have Lots 3, 2, and 1. And Lot 1 is the other lot with the wetlands on it that butts directly to the land trust property. And then this is the conservation easement on the rear of these properties.
Okay, so we've got, just to orient us, looking at this map, to the left and on the top, we have roadway. Yeah, that's the corner there.
Homes Road and Walnut Hill to the left.
Okay. And that original Lot 4 with the free split, where, is the, is the split indicated on this map?
It is not indicated on this map.
Okay.
But it's, it's actually, it has the name of the new owner on it at this point in time.
So that remains one lot, though?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was the split.
Correct, and it can't be further subdivided at this point. Gary, if we could scroll up.
And are there material changes here to the location of the lots as visualized in the initial application? Can you walk us through those changes?
Sure, so.
What things did you want to clarify? What was actually the...
Can you walk us through the changes from the last set of plans we saw, which would have been our June 13th meeting?
So, we're all aware that Lot 4 is now a free split. This lot was adjusted a little bit, and then this easement was created along this perimeter of lots 1, 2, and 3. And Lot 5, the easement was created there. And then these, there's the wetlands, 1. It's actually called parcel 2, and then up in the, did I do something wrong?
No, I'm just moving it.
That's the other parcel 1 that was given to the East Line. That's, that's the substantive of the changes. But lot, it went from 12 acres, 12.7, to 10.23.
Okay, so of the, so we've got the 12.4 acres, it goes to 10.23 because we've given wetlands to the...
And the elimination of Lot 4. Lot 4 was a free split. That was approximately 2 acres.
Okay, so it's, the bulk of that is Lot 4, not the wetlands? Okay, and the easement that you're highlighting here, kind of, you know, staircase-y thing, this is what's being proposed as the preserved open space of the subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. And that's how many acres?
.85, plus or minus? In total, .85 was the, the wetland area, sorry.
What is it without the wetland areas?
2.55.
Yes.
2.55 is this bolded area we're looking at here?
Totally about 3.4.
When you add the wetlands. Any questions from the commission on the site plan?
So we first talked about this, or when I read it in here, it's an application for five lots. And now we're saying it's four lots. I'm counting, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots still. Can, can you just clarify that?
So there's three, four proposed lots. The fifth lot is now, was free, it was a free split, so it's no longer part of the subdivision. So it's now reduced to four lots.
Okay, gotcha.
I think the only other maybe clarification, I know the town engineer had suggested the rain gardens not be incorporated into the calculation of stormwater.
They were not.
They were not, so that...
They're just there as a water quality best manager practice. It's only good for the 1-inch water quality volume, and it doesn't apply to the 210 because you'd have to, it would be exceeded. It's designed for 1-inch.
So it's just a low impact development for the local, for the residential.
Right, it's...
And is that a suggestion or a requirement?
As far as what?
As far as, when these homes are constructed?
No, because each one of these have to come in for their own application. This, I would say it's a, it's a suggestion to meet the water quality. So if they came in and, I guess, had hardship and they didn't want to do it, you could then say, you know, maybe you should or shouldn't, I don't know, that's up to the...
I think for clarification purposes is that the subdivision meets the stormwater management requirements so that we know downstream, flooding without the rain garden. And it's really to, in an effort to meet our stormwater quality requirements.
Right, okay.
Yeah, East Line has two water, you have peak volume and then volume, and an actual volume. So it's a pretty tight requirement to reduce the volume.
Okay. Additional questions on the site plan? That's on enforcement of the biological report, yeah?
Yeah, it has to do with that.
All right, so as far as materials to present to us, just, are you, do you have more?
I, unless, no, unless, I just want to cover one thing that Mr. Gashell wanted to talk about this afternoon prior to that. And that is, it sort of goes through, I think, Chairman Kirk, or Vice Chairman Scott's comment about Lot 4. So this started out, the original application is a five-lot subdivision, but it's now four because Lot 4 was conveyed out. And that is permissible without having to submit a new application. It would have been if we went from five lots to six, would have been required a new application because that would have changed what the notice to the public would have been. The public had noticed it was five, ultimately, there's five lots, one just comes out through by way of a free split. So there's no failure or lack of proper notice requirements for that, so.
Okay. If you don't mind just hanging out there for a moment, any questions on things outside of the site plan on the application in general? Mr. Bobbeck, Brian, why don't you start us off there on your question?
Yeah, I was, I understand the app, I understand the applicant is not building on these properties, but just going to sell the land. And I was just wondering, you know, when you look at the exhibit 2, the biology report, State of Connecticut, how we enforce these, I guess they're requirements. For example, you know, you can't, can't clear the property between April, you can't clear the property between April 1st and November 1st to protect the snakes and the turtles. And then they also have some building restrictions on lighting, et cetera. Just, just a question as how that gets enforced, I'm not sure.
Typically, something, for instance, no building between those months would be incorporated into the application for a building permit, saying that you can't do any construction during this period. So it would be limited, and that's how that would be enforced. The enforcement as to the lighting and so forth, that gets a little bit more difficult. It would generally be the zoning enforcement officer, I think, in East Line, who would enforce those restrictions and, or those issues. The question would be as to a homeowner coming in, being aware of those conditions. And, you know, again, those are notes that we can put on the plans so that a purchaser is aware of those obligations. For instance, the conservation area would be posted, saying that this is conservation land. There's also going to be a conservation easement in their deed, which would tell them what the restrictions are. There are always potentials for enforcement, if people don't abide by that. But there are remedies in terms of zoning enforcement, or the, and in particular, with regard to the wetlands, one of the conversations that my client had with the East Line Land Trust is that they're likely to be far more aggressive than anybody else in forcing protection of the wetlands, particularly now that they're in their title on that. Because it's their, their property, their conservation easement, and their wetlands that they're looking out for, and that's one of their parties of the, parts of the mission statement I would take, and that's how we refer to these.
Sure, so I think it wasn't necessarily construction during certain times here, it was actually excavation. So once the excavation portion of someone's building a house or whatever is done, you know, as long as they're not doing it during those time periods, because it was unearthing eggs and stuff. So it's really, it's not construction, it's the physical excavation during a certain gestation period of the...
The nesting months.
The nesting months.
Thank you. Did you have anything further that you wanted to add to that?
On that, I was just going to point back to the amended design report, and that under the biological report, the applicant would request the commission incorporate, deuce mitigation measures at conditions to any approval granted. So I did draft some language for that as an additional condition.
I had a question, probably for you, Gary. On the June 13th meeting, Tim May discussed that there was, and this is in regards to exhibit K, that there was, the town had unregulated drainage with no outlet protection on lots 1 and 4. Has the town done anything to correct that, that you know of?
Not currently, no. I believe that's just a leak-off there. No, there's no riprap protection. You can see it's pretty well vegetated. I, I think if anything, there would be more of a, I guess, a drainage easement issue with the neighboring property. But certainly, I think based on the vegetation, I'm comfortable with the amount of stormwater here running off in that particular case.
The other picture there too, yep.
This here?
It's just a ditch, it looks like.
Again, the pipe's been there clearly for some time. I wouldn't necessarily recommend we go in there and do anything unless there's a flood issue.
I was just curious, because I'm hearing foul.
I, I think the point we were trying to make is that there's several, what's called a leak-off on the road, and that's a direct short into the wetlands, which is problematic because any of your road salts or sediment is going to go right into the wetlands. And the typical method for that is to put in a, like a plunge pool level splitter, or something that would slow the water down, filter it out, and drop the sediment out before it goes. They only take about 10 feet. So yes, you would have to have some disturbance, but the amount of quality you would get from it would be very beneficial. So there's four locations just on this site where you've got a direct short runoff of anything that's on this road. Car accident, fire truck putting out something that's got whatever they got in the fire trucks these days is a direct short into these wetlands without any way. And having that type of, say, a plunge pool level splitter, whenever there was an issue, that they could come out, they could put up the barriers, they got a spot where to collect and retrieve it before it goes into the wetlands. So the whole state of Connecticut, every municipality is under the strict guidance now to have a stormwater district permit, and they have to show where they're meeting that. And this is clearly one that I think the town of East Line could, could make a good improvement here. So it is important to have these looked at. That's all, that's the reason I brought it up.
And, and these are all draining now into the wetlands, which is the land trust property. So I'll notify our public works department.
That's Lot 4, though.
1 and 4, yeah, that, that is...
Lot 4 is not...
Well, it's not part of this.
Right.
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 But it's showing that there's several locations along the road.
Right, I think it was Lot 5 and Lot 1 that I recall that had that, and then obviously Lot 4.
Okay, so let's just tie this up. That, that would be a town...
Town-initiated.
Responsibility.
Correct.
Okay. Even on the areas that are now already conveyed because it is runoff from the town road?
Well, anything in the right way, obviously, then we potentially may have to work with the budding landowners if we had to do work on their property or something like that. Certainly, if the budding landowners want to undertake the work themselves, we could work with them as well.
Right, but I just wanted to confirm on record and for all of our full understanding, that would be a town responsibility, not an applicant or homeowner responsibility?
I, I would think initially.
From a legal standpoint, absolutely.
From a legal standpoint, absolutely, because you're, you're discharging off your property onto someone else's, and the law is pretty settled on that, that it's not permissible. At least in the way it's being done.
Your town has very strict water quality regulations that you're following in your site development, and you have, you know, areas that need, had that same level of, of visual, you know, optics, but, I'll just point out that you're asking developers to do design work, to make waterfall improvements, and there you go.
Understood.
Be a better example is what it sounds like.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Are we going to discuss at all about the fee that was mentioned for the two acres of open space that are not provided, but required?
I, I do have some discussion items about that, but I, I don't know that they're questions for Attorney Garrity.
Right.
Do you have any questions for him?
The question was more of like, what, what's the mechanism to put that into place? I, I know you said it was for the sale, upon sale of it, I think you said?
That was, that was me who said upon the sale of the property.
Yes.
All right, I think we may move into discussion as long as you don't have to jet out.
No, I don't, and the only thing that I have, and Mr. Torrance from the Land Trust here, and since we're talking about the, the balance of the open space, I'd like him to address some of the issues just in terms of the, how the open space was put together and, and that it came from this property, and I don't know, that may assist the commission in its determination as to whether to waive the additional two acres or impose a fee.
Yep, I think we'd covered that a bit at the last meeting when we talked about the history of the property in general, from the large tract and then down to what we're looking at now. So I'm comfortable if we just come with some questions upon discussion, it might be helpful to get that background then.
Okay.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think we had some good discussion and good questions. I'd like to kind of talk about some things as a group, and actually, the first one that I do want to talk about is the open space. So as our regulations state, four lots, 10 acres or more are required to hit that 30% mark of open space. We have talked at this commission in the past about previously conveyed open space and whether or not that should count, and so we've had those discussions, if you want to kind of jog them back up to the front of your mind. Doing a quick calculation here just to talk about the numbers that, that we're looking at before we get into open space or fee in lieu of open space. If you take away the free split, which would have, you moved from the 12.4 acres to still the 10.23. We are looking at a plan that designates 2.55 acres of open space, which is just under 25%. We're about half an acre short on open space. We'd need 3.07 roughly acres of open space to satisfy that 30%. Now, of course.
But the amount is 50%, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm saying 30?
Yeah, if you were in the R40 district, so if you look at my memo on page four.
Thank you for correcting me.
You're in the RU80, so they would need, if you take the 24.68 plus the .85 acres of wetlands, it comes to roughly 3.3 acres, so that does meet 30% in total.
Well, that's with the wet.
Right, it's with the wetlands, which have been conveyed, I'm just pointing that out. So, but again, that's 30%, and the regulations require 50 in the RU80 and the RU120.
Thank you for correcting me.
So the total, based on my math, 50% of 10.33 acres is 5.165 acres.
And we have 3.07 plus the .85 wetlands conveyed.
Correct, so not counting the wetlands.
So not counting the wetlands, we have 3.07.
Just the open space, there would be an additional 2.615 acres needed to meet the 50%.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for correcting my math on that again, appreciate that. What I wanted to look at as we consider this conveyed wetland space is also, we do have some regulations about how much of the open space can be wet.
No more than 50% can be wet per our regulations.
All right.
Seven dash two dash three.
Thank you. Right on it. Actually, I had highlighted it.
I, I would, and I think as you heard Attorney Garrity indicate, it is worth noting that the subdivision as designed would also meet the layout of a conventional subdivision, under which case, under statutes anyway, only 10% of the land is required to be restricted.
That's an area where our regulations kind of are a little bit great, because we do, we require this designation for, you know, the lot number and acreage size.
Correct.
So it's my, can, can we talk that out quickly? It's my opinion that our regulations require us to view this as a CDD and not as a standard subdivision because of the number of lots and the size.
Well, based on that, yeah, it's not, it's, it's actually 10, greater than 10 acres, so, um, so in our cases, you know, the reg seven dash one says conventional subdivisions, less than four lots or less than 10 acres, dedication of, dedication of open space shall be in an amount of not less than 10% of the gross land area. So we exceed the 10 acres and we're now down to four lots, but.
Yeah, so it's, it's my understanding in the regulations that discussion of conventional subdivision is moot here as we are over, we are at slash over four lots and we are at slash over 10 acres. I'd love to take the pulse of the commission members on that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we're looking at a need for open space of 50% of 10.23 acres.
That would be the, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? The requirement is 10, is 50% of 10.33 acres?
Two, two three or three three?
I believe that the total acreage was 10.33.
Three three, all right, I wrote two, sorry.
I guess that's what we're showing. Yeah, 10 point, the overall parcel as it remains is 10.33.
Thank you, I can't see that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If we, if anyone has questions, feel free at any time, otherwise I know we're all kind of digesting this material at our own pace as well. Okay. Um, have a little bit of math for us on these open space calculations, and then I also kind of want to check out, um, the, um, the regulations on fee in lieu of open space. Is everyone comfortable with going there? Okay. So, let's say we, I have two scenarios. If we're to include the previously conveyed wetlands into the calculation and if we were to exclude the previously conveyed wetlands into the calculation, right? So if we're counting the acreage, including the .85 acres of wetlands previously conveyed to the Land Trust, we're looking at a total parcel of 11.18 acres. Under our regulations of 50% conveyance of open space, preservation of open space, we'd be looking at needing 5.59 acres of open space. We would have, as these plans indicate, 3.4 acres of open space, leaving us 2.19 acres short on the open space. If we are to discount the wetlands, take them off of the acreage because they've already been conveyed outside of this subdivision application, we are looking again at our 10.33 acre parcel with a required need of 5.17 acres of open space. We would have 2.55 acres of open space as indicated on the plan, leaving us 2.62 acres short on the open space there. So we've got, if we're counting the wetlands as the, as the property, we're 2.19 short. If we set aside the wetlands as they've already been given to the Land Trust, we are 2.62 acres short. Anyone wanting to question my math or my sanity, please feel free. Okay, we're on the same page.
I think I slightly disagree, I think the 10.3, if I'm looking at it correctly, includes the .85 in the wetlands. So that, that, that would be the high number.
What, when I just asked, it was 10.33 after the 12.4 subtracted lot four and the .85 acres of wetlands that you already conveyed?
No, it's, the total there is 10.3 acres there, which excludes lot four.
Right.
Is that, and that, that includes the .85 for the wetlands.
How big is lot four? Can anyone read that from here?
I have no lot split, I guess. It is 2.07 acres.
Okay, so if we had a 12.4 lot size to start with, right, 12.4, and we subtract out 2.07 for lot four, you're right, then we get the 10.33. So the 10.33 is inclusive of the already conveyed.
Correct.
.85 acres. Okay, so, let me, so this turns into with wetlands.
So it actually gets to be 4.74 acres. All right, that's what I, 30% of 9.48 acres.
And we have 3.4.
Looks like they'd actually be short 2.19 acres.
That, that's what we already, that's what I had, and if I adjust it, it's 1.34.
And you adjust it for?
For that. Okay, here's.
You, you adjust it for what?
For, I had 10.33 as the number that was exclusive of wetlands, if I make, if it, we, I just learned.
Yeah.
That it's 10.33 inclusive of wetlands. So if we do our inclusive of wetlands calculation, we are, I'm showing 2.62 short, and if we take out the wetlands, that leaves us with 9.48 acres and a requirement of 4.74 acres, and we've got 3.4 acres designated on the map, which makes us 1.34 acres short.
Right. I'd agree.
Great, thank you. Got there eventually.
Yeah.
So we're talking the difference of about 1.3 acres if we consider the wetlands or if we do not consider the wetlands as a part of this because they have already been split off. And so that's something that I'd like to discuss as a group, and then I'd like, and I'd like to discuss this fee in lieu of open space. So let's figure out how many acres we're dealing with first before we talk about fee in lieu of open space, because I think that decision will influence the other, yeah?
Sure.
So, we've had this discussion before about if someone chooses to convey open space outside of the application, does that or does that not factor into the open space requirements within the application? So I think that's, again, what we are looking at here. So I would love some, some thoughts on that, open it up to the group.
I mean, it would've been, it would've been easy enough for them to just carve off a section and make it a little bit different upfront, like just plan to have that open space conveyed, you know, with proper planning, they could have just sold less or given less to the Land Trust or, and made up this difference without us having this discussion. Like, like if they would've planned this out, wouldn't, wouldn't this be like a non-issue?
Yeah, if they, if they were able to come up with another 1.3 acres of easement area, then.
Or it probably would've been a non-issue if it wasn't already split, because I think that's what we're talking about. I don't think we're talking about yet, uh, total open space. I think we're talking about whether or not to consider this .85 acres of wetland in the calculation for total open space.
I, I don't believe you could legally.
Right.
You, you, they've indicated the 305 acres which were conveyed to the Land Trust, that, from which this parcel was, the 12 acre parcel was created. Again, that was conveyed outside of a subdivision approval, so they couldn't count that toward their open space requirement. So I think it's certainly worth recognizing that, that was done. So I think it's certainly worth recognizing that that was done, but technically legally can't comply with our regulation.
Well, that's kind of how I feel about this
The same with the wetlands.
.85 acres of wetland.
They're no longer
It has already been conveyed, so it is not
They're no longer part of the parcel.
Subject to the application.
So you have to calculate the open space based on the parcel area less the wetlands.
Which brings us to a parcel area of 9.48 acres
Correct.
of which we need 4.74 acres of open space preserved and which we have 3.4 acres of space preserved. Now. So I don't know if I have that 3.4.
So, I mean, looking at this map, I mean, I don't know, but I'm guessing there's quite a bit of land there on lot five, manly slope. But albeit it's upland area. It would qualify, I mean, you could just condition that they provide an additional 1.3 acres of open space. Can have a discussion with them. They're here now. So that may be a possibility. It's just a mute point. We had a previous subdivision in which we conditioned the open space, I think it was between Roxbury Road and, was it Roxbury? I just remember it butted Cypress Way. And we put a strip of open space along the rear property line that fronted on cul-de-sac. That was a conditioned item. So it's possible.
So a conventional subdivision, 9.99 acres requires only 10% open space?
Correct, because it would then not be less than the 10 acres.
Then when we go to
So it's four lots. So I think the commission would have some discretion based on the regulation.
Then when we go to 10, it goes to 50%, it's like a huge jump.
We have that discretion in the other way around, too. That our, our regulations specify that a subdivision for lots or 10 acres or more be evaluated as a conservation design. And that, and we do have the discretion to apply that conservation design review to other smaller subdivisions as well. So I would say the way it's written to me, it gives us, it's designed to promote more conservation design districts versus less.
I would note that the reg says the dedication of open space shall be in an amount not less than 10% of the gross land area of the subdivision. And that would be in the case of less than four lots or less than 10 acres. And this is four lots, less than 10 acres if you less the wetlands. So from that perspective, so the minimum is 10%. They do meet that requirement. But again, for the conservation design of which this is, they need to meet the 50% under the zoning reg there. And again, it's only 1.3 acres short. So I think the question here is for the applicant, would the applicant be willing to look at the conservation easement for another 1.3 acres?
1.3 or 2.19? I did that twice.
1.3.
It is 1.3.
I'm certainly willing to look at it. The issue is I need to talk with Mr. Bernardo to see if it is an easement. Unfortunately for us, he's on Block Island. Fortunately for him, he's on Block Island. Although after that storm blew through, maybe he's not so fortunate. But I would have to talk with him to see that if he believes it's feasible to do that. But I'd like to point out the irony, I think, in the regulations here. And that is the larger the subdivision, the less open space you have to give as a percentage of the development. This is a small subdivision. It meets both the conventional subdivision design and the CDC design. But it meets the CDC design essentially largely because it's small. It's no different in, you know, my concept or my understanding from having sat on our planning commission where we did this is conservation subdivisions say, here's 200 acres. You get your 22 houses, but they're on 50. And we have the exact opposite here with that. So there's some irony in terms of how the regulations apply here. But I think, you know, what we'd be, as I've indicated, we're willing to do is for the additional 1.3 acres, we can make a payment in lieu of that. And I think that goes under the statute. So I'll read the statute, it says, "Such regulations may, with the approval of the commission, authorize the applicant to pay a fee to the municipality or a fee to the municipality and transfer land to the municipality in lieu of any requirement to provide open space. Such payment in combination with the fair market value of the property shall be equal to no more than 10% of the fair market value of the property." And what we're proposing here is to say, look, there really isn't much more open space that you're going to get. That's a, you know, we could put a conservation easement and create it in open space, but the question is are you getting any more quality open space, particularly after you look at the other land previously, as I get it's not part of the subdivision, but that has been set aside with the land trust. We think it makes more sense to put something in the town's open space fund rather than try and squeeze out another 1.3 acres on this property. That's likely to do little if anything in terms of the intent of open space, and that's to reduce fragmentation of habitat.
Understood. Couple follow-ups. This first one's for Gary. I do not believe that this commission has, in my memory, accepted a fee in lieu of open space. And I do not believe that the town has a dedicated open space fund because that came up in the plan of conservation. We would love for the town to have a dedicated open space fund.
We had a C N R E account for open space funds. We did make changes to our regulations that explicitly took that out, that fee in lieu of open space out. However, as Mr. Attorney Gary is indicating, as the Connecticut general statutes under that would allow you to, at least allow them to propose posting a fee. Similar to an affordable housing application that's being submitted under eight dash 30 G.
Right.
Request to submit a fee under the same statute.
I also challenge two statements to make. One, that it would be unmeaningful open space because this is contiguous to a large tract of open space, which would make it meaningful. And I would love for you to just explain, because I want to follow your rationale there so that I get my head around it. The irony of, I would love for you to explain bigger development, less open space.
Well, you're
The statement you made.
You're asking, and before I get to that, I think one way to maybe resolve this tonight is if we could take a brief recess and I'll go call my client, find out what she is willing to do. If she says, find the open space, end of discussion, I assume, based on
Right.
where the conversation is going right now. But the irony of it is if you take 100 acres and you develop it, right, under the conventional subdivision, you only have to set aside 10 acres.
But you can't develop it under a conventional subdivision in our regulations because it would be, it would exceed that.
All right, I'm looking at it because most of ours are CDCs when we come in here, so, but, but my, that's, when I look at a conventional subdivision, it's a street inn with side streets, boom, and everybody has an easement along the back of their property, and that's that. But you end up developing a lot more. The conservation subdivisions that we did on my commission, we said, you take the number that you generate from the conventional subdivision, place it in a conservation subdivision, and then setbacks and lot areas and all that go out the window if you can meet all the health and safety requirements on that.
Yeah.
But if we want to, I'm not asking the commission to take a break, but if I can step out of the room, go make a phone call to my client, I'll see what I can do.
That seems reasonable to me.
If you'd like to take a recess, I
Yeah. Great. Let's take a quick break.
Pause the recording?
I am.
Does that work?
I guess so.
It's on.
Okay, so it is eight twenty-six and we're coming back from a brief recess.
So I spoke with my client and we will come up with the 1.34 additional acres. I don't, I can't tell you tonight exactly where it will be. I need her and Mr. Bernardo to look at that. But assuming we got a conditional approval saying we can add that to the satisfaction of Mr. Geisell, we'll do it.
Okay. Great. So that's good to have on the table. I have a couple of questions on that. So that is reminding me of a previous application we had in which the open space had not been designated. And our regulations indicated that if it was not designated on the plan, the commission would designate it. Remember we did that?
Yeah.
Off of Bush Hill? Can we just make sure that we're staying true to ourselves here? I cannot recall where that was. Probably in the open space.
I haven't looked at the exact circumstance matters, right? Like for the other thing that we did in the past.
No.
Just the fact that it was...
I just want to clear up...
We want to do it for this.
Yes, I want to clear up what, I want to clear up in the regulations.
Where that stated?
The...
Or why?
What our responsibilities are as far as conditional approval when the site plan that we're approving does not match the site plan that will be filed. Do you know what I'm saying? Because I think that if it was, I'm not saying you're going to do this, you're not going to do this. But if you decided to take like, oh, we're going to put three feet of open space here and another two here and another two. You know, that would not meet the spirit. So I think that's what we kind of, I think that's what the regulation is designed to prevent there.
Probably the obvious location for this. Is that it would be to the rear, in other words, we would expand the conservation on the rear of these two parcels and then look at parcel five as well because it's one of the larger ones to make sure that we have, we can meet the 1.3. But that's what I'm being told is that from their, the client's perspective, that's, would be the simplest solution to this. Because it's not likely to impact building locations or anything like that.
Yeah, I absolutely think you're right. I just want to make sure that we are clear on what our regulations say. So I think that's in section seven.
Yes, section sevens are open space easements. There's also seven dash two dash four kind of prevents what you were talking about. That no open space parcel or contiguous conservation easement area shall be less than one acre unless it meets the total open space requirements for the subdivision.
Yep.
Just had a question about seven dash two in L to protect steep slopes or control soil erosion. Wouldn't it make sense to take, like you said earlier, a little off the back of five where there is apparently a slope there?
That's what I was thinking. You know, it's difficult land to develop anyway, so you've already met your, well, there's no wetlands on the, or is there any wetlands on the portion of the space? Not of, no.
Not in the open space.
Not in the open space. So that you don't worry about the 50% requirement there. So you'd just be protecting that slope a little additionally. I only see conveyance. I don't see where that issue came up.
Do you recall that though?
I do. I know we designated it.
Okay, so let's say that this wasn't about open space. Let's say it was about another change or improvement to the site plan. Let's just walk through a hypothetical of how this board would provide conditional approval and then have a modified site plan submitted as final. Can you just walk us through that?
Well, as I read section four dash four nine filing recording, actually, I'm sorry, four dash four eight endorsement. If the commission shall approve a plan or modify and approve a plan, its approval with the date thereof, together with a statement of any modifications, applying to such approval shall be endorsed on the plan and signed by the chairman or secretary on behalf of the commission. The final milar shall contain a signature block as shown in the P N X G. So meaning basically before you sign it, those changes will have been reflected on the plan.
And then if they're not, I'm just talking this out. If they're not, then you come back, we don't sign it and we, we're here again. Or the milars are resubmitted.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other items of discussion from the commission?
Just a quick general question on that. When we add a conditional approval for this, are we going to state where the additional open space will be taken from? Or is that up to the developer's discretion and the landowner's discretion?
I believe we can indicate some of that in the motion. I mean, it doesn't seem like in this situation that we want to or are prepared to, you know, draw lines on this application right now. But I believe it would be within our purview to suggest that they, that the open space be attached to the existing open space.
Correct.
Correct. I would indicate it'd be contiguous with the existing.
Yeah, just an extension of the existing open space line.
Okay. I personally would like a minute to just reread Gary's memo to us for just a final check, if that's okay with everyone. And then we'll have any final questions and look to end the pane of motion. Can we revisit this open space number one last time? And I am trying to be transparent, not annoying. If we are looking at this property, we are looking at a 10.33 acre property minus 0.85 acres that have already been cut off from the application and conveyed to the land trust. That leaves us with 9.48 acres to be subdivided. 50% of that acreage gets us to 4.74 acres. We are looking at the conveyance of 2.55 acres, which brings me back to that number of 2.19 acres short, not 1.3 acres short.
So in that situation, the wetlands are not included in any of the calculation?
Well, that's what we discussed because they're already conveyed. They are already, you know, out, they're no longer part of the application.
You can't count them.
At all.
At all.
Okay, so then the 2.19 number makes sense.
Cool. So it...
So in total, it's 4.7?
In total, it's 4.7 needed. We've got 2.55 indicated on the plan, which then leaves us with 2.19 to go. Now Attorney Garrity said his client was willing to come up with 1.3, but is she willing to come up with 2.19?
I think we were to get a conditional approval on that yet. Finding the space. Lot five.
Is there the space? Does it exist if we're taking off lot four? Because we're in, you know, that RU 80.
No, we, so I'm looking at just a rough sketch. We were talking about the rear of these lots and lot one having that. And then lot five would probably give us the additional open space.
And does that leave lot five as big enough now that you've chumped off the wetlands and the...
Yes, because just, I would also note, this is a conservation easement. So the land area doesn't get reduced, so it still meets the underlying zoning requirement. Because the lot itself... And five is 3.5 acres after the adjustment.
I see. So it might be an adjustment of like, you know, say where the home is placed, but not the actual... Thank you for clearing that up. Gary, I do have one administrative question here. As it has come up in the past when talking about completeness of applications. I'm looking here at your notes in the memo. As you're describing the application, applicant Nahantik Island subdivision, Kristen Clark and Shelley Harney, Holmes Road East Line, Connecticut, scale one inch equals 50 feet, dated April 28th, 2023, revised through July 7th, 2023. And we've been through this before with some other site plans. Do we require one inch equals 200 feet per section 4.2? Again, I'm not trying to be nitpicky. We, I'm sure we could waive that if needed. I just want to get all of us on the same page because it's these little things that trip us up. And I believe that tripped us up in the past. Because we've got a couple of things in here. Scale one inch equals 40 feet, scale one inch equals 200 feet. I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, we have what we need and give the applicant, you know, the guidance to provide us with that.
Okay. Section five dash two dash two indicates they should be, the plan should be submitted on the sheets of its size, not exceed 24 inches wide and by 36 inches long and shall be drawn to a horizontal scale of one inch equals 40 feet and a vertical scale of one inch equals four feet. Except that cross-sections drawn shall be drawn to a horizontal and vertical scale of one inch equals 10 feet, period.
So we have it right now as one inch equals 50 feet. And then we have it in four dash two as, okay, not less than one inch equals 200 feet.
I would note the actual subdivision plan itself prepared by Mr. Bernardo. The screen there, is that a scale of one inch equals 40 feet?
Okay, so it's just kind of misrepresented here in this.
The engineering plans, I believe, were done at a scale of one inch equals 50 feet.
Okay, so we're good.
Although this plan here, it's shown above, shows it at a scale of one inch equals 40.
Right. That's what we require.
Check of in my memo. This, the, this plan here, the engineering plan was done at 1.50, but the Bernardo plans were done at 1.40.
Great.
This lot five blow-up is done on a scale of 1.40?
All right. Are we ready to kind of look at a motion? Yeah. Yeah. Great. Oh, great. So it would be six and seven?
Five and six and then I just made condition five number seven. Just putting those before.
Okay.
Or you could just, I don't want to confuse it, so it was easier for you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and outline what I think we have together as conditions of approval. And Sue, I can provide you with a hard copy of this. So if we move to approve, I'd like to propose the following conditions. Maybe it's best to discuss these and then have, have the motion? Okay. So requirement one would be that an erosion and sedimentation control bond for each lot in an amount satisfactory to the town engineer and planning director and in a form acceptable to the Town of Eastlime Planning Commission shall be posted with the town prior to the site start of any site work, including but not limited to clearing grubbing, filling and grading. That's one of our normal requirements. Copies and deeds and easements, including instructions proposed to be executed or delivered after approval of the application, shall be submitted as specified in section four dash two dash 10 of the regulations and provided to the planning director for review and approval prior to the filing of the subdivision on the land record. Good? A note to be placed on the plan indicating that no more than 50% of each lot be cleared and any activity within the 300-foot upland review area will require an inland wetlands permit from that agency or its agent and the inland wetland conservation tags supplied by the Town of Eastlime shall be installed every 40 to 50 feet on center along the wetland boundaries and conservation area. This is the recommendation that came to us from the inland wetlands agency from their previous...
Correct. I didn't have a chance to draft a formal letter, so I've included the minutes from their previous meeting as evidence of that report.
Great. Number four, the developer of each lot shall apply for a right-of-way permit from the engineering department for each individual house. Standard stuff. Number five, the mitigation recommendations as prescribed by Shannon Corny of Connecticut Deep Wildlife Division in the National Diversity Database Report dated 3/13/23 shall hereby be incorporated into the proposed development plan for the subdivision. Now, we discussed earlier kind of how those may be implemented, but we do want a note on the plan. Yeah?
Correct. And I think we'd want them as a condition that they be incorporated.
Yep. Number six, 2.19 acres of additional open space shall be provided contiguous to the proposed open space to the satisfaction of the town planner and planning commission. Now that would be when the final milars are submitted before Gary and I would sign them. We would make sure that the spirit of what we're discussing now is reflected in the plan. And number seven, the applicable items just listed shall be accomplished prior to the filing of the subdivision on the land records or other documentation of planning approval and no further site work shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the subdivision with outlined modifications? Oh, I don't think we need to read the whole thing.
Do you need me to read the whole thing?
I don't think we need to. Do you need us to read those modifications again?
The ones you just said?
Yeah.
And then, okay.
I would, I would note though that those are the conditions. Because you're not making, unless they're a part of your motion, they should really be a part of the motion. I would strongly encourage that, but...
With the condition, if he says move to approve with those conditions?
Yes.
That's all you need.
Okay. Okay. I hereby move to, motion to approve the application known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P E for Eastlime Land Trust Incorporated, for a four-lot subdivision at property located at the corner of Upper Walnut Hill Road and Holmes Road. Eastlime Assessor's Map 55, Lot 3 dot 1, and plans entitled subdivision plan, Nahantik Island subdivision, applicant Kristen Clark, P E, and Shelley Harney, Holmes Road and Upper Walnut Hill Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, dated February 7th, 2023, and revised through July 7th, 2023, prepared by James Bernardo, L S of James Bernardo Land Surveying and Plans, entitled applicant Nahantik Island subdivision, Kristen Clark and Shelley Harney, Holmes Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, scale 1 to 40, as discussed, dated April 28th, 2023, and revised through July 7th, 2023, sheets six through 10 of 10, prepared by May Engineering LLC, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements and required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application as mentioned before, with conditions one through seven. This approval is specific to the subdivision plan submitted as the application known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P E, and Shelley Harney, Applicants, Portside Holdings LLC. Owner, application for a five-lot subdivision at property located on the corner of Upper Walnut Hill Road and Holmes Road, Eastlime Assessor's Map, number 55, Lot number 3 dot 1, zoned RU 80, for a four-lot subdivision and plans entitled subdivision plan, Nahantik Island subdivision, applicant Kristen Clark, P E, and Shelley Harney, Holmes Road and Upper Walnut Hill Road. Holmes Road and Upper Walnut Hill Road, East Lime, Connecticut dated February seventh, 2023 and revised through July seventh, 2023, prepared by James Bernardo L. S. of James Bernardo Land Surveying and Plans entitled applicant Nahantik Highland subdivision Kristen Clark and Shelley Harney. Holmes Road, East Lime, Connecticut, at the scale of one to forty dated April twenty-eighth, 2023 and revised through July seventh, 2023, sheets six through ten of ten, prepared by May Engineering LLC. Any changes in the subdivision plan shall require prior approval from the commission and/or the director of planning. Any change in the development plan layout other than those identified herein shall constitute a new application.
I second that motion and kudos to your out loud reading. That's a big motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. We do not have any zoning or municipal referrals today. We do have old business of the subdivision regulations. Has everybody had a chance to read through what Gary provided us at the last meeting? You have not, okay. And I know I'm missing three regular members, so I'm going to go ahead and suggest that we continue the discussion on subdivision regulations at our August meeting.
Okay, I did get some comment back from some town staff from William Bundy, Fire Marshal. He indicated, asked whether or not can roads be at least twenty feet wide to allow for fire apparatus to operate. Dead end roads over a hundred fifty feet would need to turn around for fire apparatus. Commented on water supply, what happened when a subdivision puts in a cistern fire pond or private hydrant, all need to be maintained for non-one and two family properties. The fire code uses NFPA twenty-five to outline this and the owner is responsible. However, if the developer leaves the open space to someone else, they need to know they are required to maintain these items. We may want to address that. I don't think that was really addressed in any of the proposed changes, so, but that is certainly something to be mindful of and as we're going through this, I can take a look at that, maybe meet with Eric Quinn and Bill Bundy and maybe come up with something to address it so that we can kind of cover those, those issues.
Yeah, do we address private fire hydrants in any of our other commission regulations?
I'd have to.
For example, water and sewer or zoning?
That's a good question. I believe, you know, I'd have to check with water and sewer. I think that's all.
I think it would just be the public.
The, the, the landowner is paying for some of that infrastructure, right, to put it in, to provide the.
Right, but private hydrant.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that.
I guess I'm, what I'm getting at is who's liable if that private hydrant does not work in an emergency?
Good question.
And I think that's what he's getting at, too.
So on that, I can speak with them on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just encourage, if you have any comments, questions, feel free to give me a buzz or just shoot them over.
I had a question on the pre-application sketch plan. We don't typically look at that as a requirement of a complete application.
No, I, but I do typically meet with the applicants prior and technically that, that suffices to meet that requirement.
So could we just kind of, I know we talked about developing a checklist. Could we put that on the checklist and then, you know, that could be just a verbal, you let us know you met with them.
That's all I have for now.
Let me just, I dog earred a couple of pages. I think we covered them now. Go ahead. Oh, okay. There was one other section, section seven dash three, the conveyance of open space. I know elsewhere we addressed the, the need for all taxes to be current on the property before the application be filed. And I was wondering if we needed to, if you could just look and see if we need to address it in that area as well. I think in here it's already part of the application, so it's already subject to the tax rules of before, but I know that that's where we've gotten tripped up on taxes is in open space, so.
You mean on, on the open space, or if there's taxes owed on the land that is then conveyed into open space?
Correct.
Ideally, the taxes, if the taxes are paid ahead of time prior to making application, if it gets conveyed as open space, there'd be no back taxes due. That's the idea.
Right, and I, right.
That when it gets conveyed, there's.
Right, but what if it's conveyed prior to the application?
Then there, there may or may not be taxes due. I don't know. I mean, if it's conveyed prior to the application, it's mute because it's not, you can't count that land as open space, like we just saw. Right, three hundred and five acres were conveyed as open space. If there was back taxes owed on that, I have no idea. It just is what it is and it's, it's preserved as open space, but at least.
So that is an issue outside of the purview of the planning commission.
Correct.
That would be an assessor.
But in the event of an application which would be within your purview, if the taxes weren't paid on the lot.
Got it.
They, they can't get a building permit, so why should they be able to get a subdivision?
Right.
Or a zoning permit or zoning approval for multifamily development.
So just clearing that up because it appears earlier and I feel like that, that was real, very clear in writing and I just wanted to make sure that we were all comfortable that we didn't need it again in seven dash three. It sounds like we don't. And then I had a question.
In terms of the conveyance of open space, though, I do, we did make some changes and it has, being that it has been just a little over ten years, I think, since we did the CDD regulations. I would note that it might be worth considering bringing back either the fee in lieu of open space and also the fee of sidewalks. Just, just a thought.
Right, but if we did that, then is the town, does the town have a mechanism to receive those fees?
Sure.
To, and to put them to something notable?
We, we would put them in the CNRE account, assuming there's the line item there, or we'd create it. I do believe that there was money in an account and a line item. And the non-recurring funds, I, I don't know if it still exists. If the money's been used up, I'd have to go take a look, but we had a line item for open space and the fee in lieu that we had, when we previously had the regulation in place, that's where it went.
The last question I had for just your thoughts before we table this to next time, it was on section eleven on enforcement. I was looking at kind of the general enforcement and the cease and desist and doesn't list any fines. Do we do any kind of finding? You know, I, I think that's come up in front of us before, too, where sometimes things go awry and we're just kind of left without a lot of recourse.
So in terms of enforcement, you know, we do have what's in the regs. We can go see conjunctions and things like that. We don't have a fine provision to, to issue fines. However, under the statutes, there was some new legislation, I believe, that passed that increased the fine from five hundred to a thousand dollars a day for as long as the violation exists in some cases. In terms of planning, it's really going to be someone trying to convey a lot that wasn't subdivided, right, was previously approved. Most likely, short of, you know, failures with erosion and sedimentation controls. Usually we carry a bond for, for those things. So if you were to enact a fine, you'd, you'd have to get the Board of Selectmen to pass that as part of the town ordinance because our fees are set by ordinance. The inland wetland agency has a provision for issuing fines. That was approved by town ordinance, so we'd have to basically create that. The other question there is, you know, to what extent can we do that as a planning commission? Does the statutes enable us to, to do it? So we may have to get some clarification from legal counsel on it, but short of that, we could pursue, you know, looking into it.
I'm just thinking about, you know, what we just approved, right, and it's one of many where we've specified, you know, clearing.
So they clear beyond the fifty percent.
Exactly, so if they clear beyond the fifty percent, we could try to issue a cease and desist while they're doing it. Would we find out until they're done? Probably not. So then we would just kind of be, oh, I wish you didn't clear that without a recourse of a fine. And I think in, in the case of fiscal responsibility to the town, enforcing the regulations and enforcing adherence to an approved site plan or subdivision does take town staff time and resources and I think that we should consider that the applicant be compensating the town for that strain on, on the resource. Food for thought.
Who's going to issue a fine?
Yeah, the, the enforcement agents. So we have, we have our, our wetland enforcement agent and our planning director and our zoning enforcement agent and our building official and a number of people who are authorized currently to issue a cease and desist. There's just no fine associated with a violation. They, they are empowered to issue a violation, but it is largely toothless.
And, you know, in, in, in any like appeal or court proceeding, obviously the town would seek, right, reimbursement for attorney fees and things like that. Typically, those aren't awarded, so although we ask, they're typically not ever awarded. It's not like, it was an expenditure.
Yep.
So all right, food for thought. I can take a look at that. I guess we could, I'll, I'll have to talk with Kevin and counsel and figure out what's possible there. As far as, do we need a regulation or is that going to be an ordinance?
Right, and if it's an ordinance, it would just be reflected in the regulation. Okay. So more on this next time.
Do we have a timeline for this at all?
No, this is, this is all a commission initiated stuff, just things like trying to clean up a few things. In particular, the ERT was really the big impetus one that the town attorney had recommended we just delete altogether based on, on the previous meetings I think you had missed. The commission felt that, well, we didn't want to delete the whole section. We do want something, so I crafted some language, came back the next meeting, so that's what you have in front of you to take a look at. It's a little, in my opinion, I think it's a little onerous what I've drafted, but I figured big shotgun effect and I'll let you guys chip away at it.
On timeline, we do need to hold a public hearing on it and my own thoughts, and this is certainly, you know, not a mandate, just a food for thought, is I believe that we have four of six seats up for reelection in November, so the potential for four new people to have to get on board with this after we've put all this work into it is there. So I, you know, from a Gary's time and logistics standpoint, I would love to get it wrapped up by November, but that's just my own personal preference.
Ideally, it'd be December, right, when, then, because come January, if you didn't get reelected, you're not sitting here.
I think even in December, it's a new commission.
Did December really take the seats?
It's the summer first.
Yeah, so I think we need to do it by the end of our November calendar. If we want to get it done as the commission exists today.
Either way, as staff, I'll do it moving forward.
So let's try to make a commitment to reading through it and seeing if we can get to a place where we're comfortable pushing it to, proposing that it go to public hearing next month so that we could hold a public hearing in September and then we have October and November to adopt. Does that sound reasonable? All right. We do not have any new business tonight.
Michelle, can I, while we're here, can I just mention one quick thing? Jessica sent out this, send an email out to everybody about this Southeast and Connecticut Council of Governments, basically regional planning.
Right.
Do we have a designate for our planning?
I, I have gone. At the last meeting I couldn't make and Tim went, he came back with some very good notes.
Okay.
When is the next meeting?
It's Monday, July twenty-fourth.
And do we have, is that still Zoom?
I think they do.
It says it's a hybrid or at their office.
Yeah, so you can go there or you can join via Zoom.
Would anyone like to attend? Can I have another comment on that?
You want it?
Oh, no, I can't.
Oh, you said no, okay.
I can attend.
Yeah, I would like to, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's quarterly. I think someone should go.
It's a good meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good if you, if you like to know what's going on, the neighboring towns.
I will attend.
Yeah, it's definitely something, I mean, I could, I can coordinate with the cog, like call them up just about and talk to Amanda and figure out what's going on, but I think it's good for someone here. And if they're going to meet quarterly, which I do like, I'm glad to see that they were meeting annually, so, I mean, not a whole lot happens annually and typically that got missed. So they didn't have a meeting, so I think they're trying to drum up, you know, some more collective cooperation between municipalities that way, which is good to see. So we might want to designate someone every quarter or unless you want to be for as long as your term here. I mean, I don't know, Ryan, if you want to do that, but.
I'd be happy to do it.
All right, so you'll go to Monday and let us know at the next meeting how it goes.
All right.
All right. Do you want to move to adjourn?
No.
I was inviting you to be the one.
I moved to Germany.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Olivia. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, thank you. We're going to adjourn here at nine eleven.